Twenty fourteen, adding six to it. Uh, call the room.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Martin. Counselor Wheeler.
Present.
Counselor Thomas.
Present. Did we hear any, um, things from either council?
No.
Will we consider them out? Unless they are coming in.
Okay.
Remarks of the public agenda items only.
Madam President, that people who have been coming into the conference. I was looking at this, um, thing about getting the two, um, salt trucks. And I was wondering if there were any possibility that instead of getting two of them, we could use some of those funds, uh, for one of them to get something to, uh, to patch the streets. Since it's my understanding that we can't find the, um, machine to patch the streets. Um, unless, of course, we can find the machine to patch the streets because, uh, some of those streets are, are pretty appalling. And I'm just wondering about priorities and, um, I mean, plowing some of those streets that have so many potholes in them is probably just gonna tear up the streets even more than they're already torn up. And so, um, I was just hoping we could change priorities then.
Just follow me actually where we get a response at the end of, uh, the meeting. When the councilors and/or the mayor, if he appears at this meeting, he's not here right now, is he going to be in attendance?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay, then you will get your answer. Is there any more residents that would like to speak on agenda items only?
Girls, ladies. Resolution fifty fourteen. I don't remember this coming in front of the neighborhood group, Real Harps group, where this guy has been three parts of the land. I don't, I go to all those meetings, I just don't remember it coming up. I have some questions on that. Cause he's getting it for free, cheap price. So if you go back to resolution forty five fourteen, we're stocking it to, uh, good residents of the city for, for a parcel for three hundred and fifty dollars. It's kind of strange pricing on here, at three hundred and fifty dollars for people who've been around the city for a while, and you flip over to this crazy one where people are getting free parcels for bargain prices. I've got some questions on that. And I'm glad to see that we're, these are our first readings. It would be nice if you guys would let everybody know that these are first reading, except for the salt truck thing, which is an emergency. Thank you.
You will receive the answer at the end of the meeting. Are there any more, um, residents that would like to speak on the agenda items only? Well, moving right along on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Minutes to be approved.
Our committee.
Contracts and Properties Committee meeting minutes, September ninth, two thousand fourteen.
Is somebody contracting property?
That's, uh, like that.
Who's on this committee? I'm on this committee.
Does that mean you or is it your mark?
Yeah.
It's Counselor Wheeler, Counselor Thomas, and Counselor Baker.
We get to, uh, to, uh.
Yes.
I make the motion to adjourn the minutes for the, uh, Contracts and Properties Meeting, September ninth, twenty fourteen.
Do I get a second?
Can I say, say, a second?
Madam Clerk, uh, is there a discussion? Madam Clerk.
Counselor King.
She's calling the yesterday.
Yeah.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas.
Yeah. Hearing, hearings, and conduct, and scheduling. Uh, let the record reflect that Councilor Martin has entered the room. Good evening, Councilor.
Good evening, everyone.
Glad to be here.
You too.
Um, important announcement, uh, from the mayor. We'll skip that. She said he'll be here. His attendance is, uh, go clear the way for his attendance. Confirmation of appointments. Let the record reflect that, uh, Councilor Mansell Baker has entered the room. Glad to see you, Councilor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll take you off the answer today after the last, we went, Martin. Okay? Receipts and communication of petitions. Reports of council committees. Um, how's that with you, Councilor King?
Thank you, Madam President. My committee met last Thursday. We have a number of items on the agenda. They're very, uh, very good executive meetings. And some of that, some of the items appear here tonight. So you hear more about them tonight. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The personal appointment committee met, oh, I guess, about a month ago. In for, uh, about seventy-five or six months, we worked on the policies and procedures for the office for the council. Everyone participated. Now we have policies and procedures for the office. And, uh, that's a good thing. Madam Clerk, did that conclude your report?
Thank you. Um, Councilor Mansell Baker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the Contracts and Properties meeting was held, uh, a week ago, and at that meeting, uh, much of the legislation that was in committee was pulled out. Um, that was important and key to the, uh, city's, uh, strategic plan, I would say. Uh, we needed some, some properties and, and things moved on. And then you will see some of tonight that we, uh, pull legislation out of committee from the floor, um, to make it an urgent necessity that we get it passed, um, because it wasn't, uh, in the committee at the time or it was overlooked. So we are moving forward on the Contracts and Property Committee, and I thank my colleagues for their help. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilor. Um, Councilor Vice President, um, Mr. Wheeler.
Uh, health and safety has not met this month, but right now, we're, we're still in the, uh, papers for the agenda tonight, forty seven fourteen, we'll be accepting a ladder truck for the fire department. Ours has been down, and, uh, this donation, fire truck from the city of Oakwood is right on time. And that's what we have right now, uh, health and safety.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, the Finance Com- the, uh, Finance Committee has not met yet. I have been waiting for, um, the reevaluation of the appropriations, and because so much has transpired and a lot of changes have been made, and we need to redo the appropriations. I got a call, uh, just yesterday, uh, stating that we will have the appropriations, uh, this week. I will be going over, uh, the appropriations. The appropriations has to meet, uh, the certificate of resource, um, which they had met before, but there have been several changes in, um, the certificate of resource. Therefore, we have to, uh, deal with that. We cannot, um, we cannot, uh, spend any money until the appropriations have been done and came before the cons- uh, consuls. Uh, for therefore, then after that, it will go to, uh, the commission, and the commission has the, uh, last word and approval. Um, we are still trying to see if we're gonna be able to go out to the bond market and if the, uh, uh, if we will be accepted, and, uh, that's an iffy situation. Um, uh, last, on the last meeting, there was, um, some discussion as to, uh, when you come up to the podium, whether, uh, or not you have to give your name and address. It is in the charter, and, uh, I am making, um, sure that we understand that that is a charter. And in order to, uh, not do that, we have to make an attorney change. That means put it on ballot. Okay? Um, each person addressing, it says under chapter one-one-three, each person addressing council shall rise, come to the bar, give his, uh, name and address in an audible tone of voice for the record, unless further time is granted by council. Shall limit the address to two minutes and opening portion of the meeting. So I want anybody and everybody, uh, that has any question about giving their name and address, um, it is in the charter, and therefore, there has to be a charter change. Um, there will be, um, legislation, uh, coming forth, uh, to the council, and the council will deal with it to accept, uh, finances and so forth. That means that, uh, we have on waiting, um, uh, police cars, and, uh, we have also the, uh, salt trucks, and someone mentioned salt. We are looking for salt. And for, um, for the sake of, um, uh, quieting rumors, um, the trucks is sitting in the service department over there. As far as, um, the salt truck, I mean, the, um...
Co-pat.
Co-pat truck. There's a co-pat, there's the truck, there is the roller, but we do not have the, uh, trailer to pull that. That has been incapacitated for a couple of years now. They're working on that. So whatever, um, um, there might be said, that there are any trucks over there, I would advise anybody that needs to do that, go talk to the superintendent and take a look. All right? Um, that is the gist of my, um, report. Moving right along.
Proclamations, letter of condolences, John Barberino.
Yes, Madam President. Uh, John Barberino died about a week ago, and I don't know, you know John Barberino, he stays on Wyom. He's been, him and his family's been in the city for close to fifty years. And he's also been very much involved with Black on Black. He's the kind of person that is giving and sharing, and he loves East Cleveland. And I'll just read, uh, excerpt of what we, the council has provided in terms of, uh, extended condolences to the family. East Cleveland City Council would like to take time to extend our condolences to your family concerning the recent loss of your beloved John Barberino, AKA JB from EC. John proved to be, comes such irreplaceable asset to the hip-hop workshops alongside the chairman of the workshop, John Porter, that grew out of Black on Black Crime Incorporated. JB would bring food and beverages to all that would attend. JB helped to make sure that those workshops ran smoothly alongside his Kendrick spirit brother, John Porter. When the hip-hop workshop that was held this past Saturday, October fourth, twenty fourteen, at Cleveland State University, it will be a time of reflection and be known that it's the day also, that the day that JB from EC was laid to rest, that was this past Saturday. The loss of John is one that is felt just not within your family, but also throughout all of the city of East Cleveland, as he was a man with a zest for life and a passion for loving and supporting his family. And this is signed by the entire council. May God be with the Barberino family. Thank you.
I also want, I'm sorry, I also wanted to, uh, speak on, uh, Mr. Barberino. He was an individual that was unique, and he was always ready to help. Matter of fact, he has one of my campaign shirts. Um, and just to let you know that he just lost his brother, if I'm not...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just lost his brother, uh, not too long ago, there is brother, and he had also lost his...
Mom.
Brother, mother.
Yes.
His brother. So it's, this is, uh, quite, uh, sympathetic, uh, for me to say that he will be missed. His family is known throughout East Cleveland, and I do miss him, cause he used to be in the parades when I was in the parades. Um, he will be missed. Uh, Counselor King has something to say.
I had a question. Is that silver, he?
No.
No.
It's two different. One is white and one is black. That's a difference.
When you said JB from EC.
Uh...
JB stands for John Barberino.
Councilor, Councilor Mansell Baker.
Um, wanted to, uh, definitely, you know, give reverence to, uh, that this gentleman, um, very committed to the city and, um, never met a person like him yet to, to be as tireless in an effort to, to, you know, support organizations and, and be about the business of the East, East Cleveland community. There are a lot of people out here fighting, but I think he's one among the greatest of us.
Thank you. Uh, I thank you for those comments, and I, uh, know that, uh, his family appreciate the comments and appreciate the, uh, the letter of condolences from the council. Moving right along, Madam Clerk.
Moving to the right of the table. Ordinance number forty-four dash fourteen. An ordinance pending section one oh five, point oh four A for the codified ordinances of the city of East Cleveland authorizing the disposition of unapproved, nonproductive residential vacant side yard lots adjacent to homeowner occupied lots for the sum of one hundred dollars. This is first reading.
No action will be taken because of the fact that it is first reading. Continue.
Resolution number forty-five dash fourteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer to Maxine and Philon Cheek at a cost of three hundred and fifty dollars. A parcel of land held by the city is part of its land reutilization program and located at sixteen forty-five Elveron Avenue, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two. Permanent parcel number six seven two dash oh six dash oh five two. First reading. Next. Resolution number forty-six dash fourteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer to Leoni Woods, doing business as X Enterprise at a cost of one hundred and fifty dollars. A parcel of land held by the city is part of its land reutilization program and located at two zero zero five Hillsborough Road, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two. Permanent parcel number six seven three dash fifteen dash zero one five. First reading. Resolution number four seven dash fourteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the donation of a nineteen eighty-eight fire truck from the city of Wolf, Oakwood Village. First reading. Resolution number forty-eight dash fourteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor predicated upon concurrence from the state fiscal commission to enter into a contract with the American Road Machinery Company, Rush Truck Centers, Ohio, for the lease purchase of two snowplow salt trucks for the removal of snow within the city of East Cleveland at a capital, salt trucks for the, oh, I already read it, at a capital cost of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars per vehicle, and declaring an emergency for the public safety. First reading. Resolution number forty-nine dash fourteen.
No, it's, it's an emergency.
Oh, it's an emergency, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, uh, sponsored resolution forty-eight dash fourteen, move for its adoption.
I second that motion.
It is also sponsored by Mansell Baker and the Councilor Brandon King. We have to mention that.
I will, I will sponsor it as well.
Okay.
And I, you can add me to it too.
All right. I'll be a little, um, um...
I can, I can speak on it if you want.
Can I? Can I just do it my sentence? Uh, I got a sponsor, okay? Is there, um, any discussion?
They're pre-sponsored.
Yeah. Any discussion?
You have to.
Yeah. Mister, uh...
Just about council.
With Counselor Baker, Counselor King, Counselor Martin, Counselor Thomas?
No, I'll accept my three compliments. That's without sponsoring. That's nothing. Okay. Okay, all right. Um, uh, Mister King, you wanted to elaborate on it?
Uh, resolution forty-eight fourteen, there's been some discussion, when I walked in, there was some discussion out in the hallway about it. It, it is an emergency, and there's a number of factors we, we have to take into account when looking at these vehicles. And one is the fact that there's a, a significant lead time on having these vehicles made. This is not the type of thing where you can call, they can have your vehicle ready for you in a week or so. So we definitely want to get this, get the ball moving on this simply because of the number of steps that we have to go through in order to create the purchase order, and then the timeframe it's gonna take to, to have these trucks delivered. There was a question earlier when you got to priorities, and I, I did a quick count. There are roughly nine hills in this city, and one truck, in my opinion, could not cover nine hills in a snowstorm. So we would definitely need more than one truck, and I think if we're prioritizing, uh, needs of the city, I think, I, I think the salt trucks are, I don't want to say above the potholes, but I would, I would move for the salt trucks to get a little faster than the, than the potholes.
I would concur with, um, Counselor King. They're both equal. Um, based on the, um, time and season, this one takes priority because of the fact that if we get another winter like we had last year, your potholes won't make a difference. It'll be filled with snow, and that'll take care of potholes, and you won't be able to get up the hills, you won't be able to get out in the street. So it is an emergency, and I don't think we have to keep stressing that fact. There was a lot of people that, um, weren't able to get up the hills, Forest Hill, Noble, uh, Superior Hill, and the streets that were caused. Uh, Counselor, maybe you have something to say?
Uh, just wanted to remind the public that we did solicit the help of Cleveland Heights on numerous occasions, and, and, and occurred last year. So I wanted the public to be cognizant of that. Um, this year, I don't know if we had that walking relationship. We have, uh, lost our director of service, uh, Director Brinketelli, and he, uh, had that, uh, relationship with Cleveland Heights, and I don't know if it still exists now that he's absent. Um, so we have to keep in mind that we do want to still keep up on our services for the residents of East Cleveland and not be so apart. So at this point, you know, I'm urging my colleagues to support me on moving forward on this piece of legislation.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I concur with saying, and I just want to say that I don't know what the status is of what the, uh, you know we need your trucks, and it's Mansell and Brandon King who did. Cleveland Heights has helped us on the hills, the hills are very crucial. My concern, trepidation is salt. Uh, and I don't know what's going on with that. I'm trying to be positive, and I hope that we have enough salt to cover this, uh, coming in, that's my concern.
I think, um, based on, um, first come the truck, then comes something to put in it, which is salt. So we are, it's a, it's a, a thing where we looking for both, and if we can get one, we are working on the other. And like I said before, uh, the appropriations will include, uh, salt in these trucks. The trucks were, uh, a petition for before, uh, and I have to give that to her, um, it's, uh, what is her name, uh?
Hannah.
Hannah. No.
Fire.
No. Um, Clint Scale. Me, Ms. Clint Scale had petition for the trucks, and they were, uh, under the, um, uh, financial recovery plan. So that's why we will be looking at the trucks under, uh, the, uh, appropriation. As soon as those appropriations are finished, and they're supposed to be finished this week, and we will be coming back to, uh, the council, and you weren't new, Ma- uh, Councilor Martin and Mansell wasn't new when I spoke on it, um, there will be, um, in the appropriations to allow the trucks. Then from there, it will go from us, it will go to, uh, the commission. Commission has the last word on, uh, what is or what is not, and, and they're now trying to put the, um, appropriations in sync with the, uh, resource, certificate of resource. Once that's done, then we'll be moving forward. Am I not correct, Director Blake, Assistant Director Blake?
Um, you are correct. It's also included in the one-year action plan, because this is HUD funded, it's grant funded. It doesn't come out of revenue.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, um, call for the vote.
Counselor King?
Yeah.
Counselor Baker?
Yeah.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas?
Yeah.
That was unanimous, huh?
Okay. Um, you know, what?
Resolution number forty-nine dash fourteen. Resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer to Weldon Hill, the port, at a total cost of fifty dollars. A parcel of land held by the city is part of its land reutilization program and located at eighteen ninety-four Charles Avenue, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two. Permanent parcel number six seven three dash ten dash zero six four. This one is first reading. Resolution number fifty dash fourteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer to Ken A. Smith at a total cost of nine hundred dollars. Three parcels of land held by the city as part of its land reutilization program and located at six seventeen sixty Elveron Avenue. Permanent parcel number six seven two zero seven dash zero seven one. Seventeen sixty-four Elveron. Permanent parcel number six seven two oh seven oh seven two. And seventeen sixty-eight Elveron Avenue. Permanent parcel number six seven two oh seven oh seven three, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two. First reading.
Madam Chair, um, for the record, um, uh, Director Blake, have these, um, parcel, uh, legislation went through the NAC?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, that's correct.
Okay.
Um, I do know that there is an appraisal package, uh, that accompanies legislation also for each parcel.
So we have, um, they have been approved, and they have met all the qualifications that was necessary to pass the, uh, land on to the buyer?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving right along.
Resolution number fifty-one dash fourteen. A resolution granting a conditional use permit pursuant to section eleven-two-three-point oh three A, capital P, of the East Cleveland Codified Ordinances, to Christ Baptist Church for an accessory parking lot at one sixty twenty-one Neelacres Road, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two. First reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Um, we're, uh, calling, calling, uh...
Yes. Yes, sir.
Have you reflected that as co-sponsored today?
Yes, sir.
Resolution fifty-one fourteen, sir?
Me too.
Two sponsors?
Yeah.
Two co-sponsors.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Remarks and requests of the public?
How many minutes will we have, Madam Chair?
Eight, nine, ten minutes.
Um, Saint Renee Menandro? Your time starts. Mister O'May, your time is starting now.
O'May's eighteen-six, Rock removed. I see one, two, three, four, five, six, possibly seven pieces. I see one, two, three, four, five, six, possibly seven pieces of land. Some of them three partials, some of them are two. I'm, I cannot fathom, and maybe you can. You sit here, you have the last say of this land. We're constantly raising buildings ever, all over the doggone city. But I don't see absolutely nothing that's being built. Now you're turning around selling the land for a hundred dollars, fifty dollars, uh, three hundred dollars. Three partials of land where you can build. This, a lot of this property is building. And so I don't, no one can tell me any different than that. Now, uh, it is building. And then you're turning around here selling it and you are sitting here as a council helping demise, causing the demise of this city. Just selling everything away for nothing, absolutely nothing. Then how you gonna think you gonna stay afloat? And then you, and insult to injury. I feel the salt trucks, I don't know the condition of them, or whatever you're talking about purchasing from, uh, uh, wherever, I can't see the name of it. Uh, from the, uh, Oakwood Sil- uh, Village, uh... How many, uh, salt trucks, I'm sorry, not fine trucks, salt trucks. I still don't know the condition of it. So we're buying somebody else's stuff, used stuff. But then we're gonna say the potholes are not that important. The potholes are important, whereas our tax dollars are important. Our tax dollars go for the utility, maintain this city and also, uh, provide service to the city. So don't forget what you're here for. And thirdly, the ordinance, there is an ordinance not in the charter, Madam President. It, that's an ordinance, uh, in reference to speaking time. But any, I mean, not speaking time, uh, uh, you come and address this council. So I want this council to stop and cogitate, muddle over just because somebody, you got somebody up there just giving the city away. And after a while, you won't have a city, you won't end up, you'll be sitting up here because we won't have a city. And we're not building anything to keep the, uh, our, uh, our, our residents up 'cause we're predicated on it. You can go out here and hoop and holler all you want about, well, it was passed, we know it was passed by Congressman Stokes. We know it was, uh, 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 congressional, uh, action. But that congressional action can change. That Congress can change that. Same as you sit up here and change the laws or whatever. So they have that same opportunity of doing it. So you better get on your Ps and Qs.
I must thank you.
Dr. Patricia, well, hi, eighty-nine-four Farnington. I just wanted to mention that I attended today a community summit on solutions for gun violence in our city that was held at, uh, Tri-C Metro. keynote speaker was Willie Brown, a former mayor of San Francisco, who was actually a fascinating speaker, hosted by exactly a number of people from law enforcement, the media, um, various government, uh, people from the, uh, from various universities, uh, foundations. And, uh, it's really too early to, to give anything that would be a useful overview because I just left it, uh, earlier today. But they're also going to have follow-up meetings and I will, um, send information that are today.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Kenny Downey, eighteen fifty-seven, nine seventy, Cleveland, um, about the salt trucks. I still say last week when we had that, whatever was it before last? We had that meeting, we all had meeting here and, you know, we need salt. And if you look at it, we also should be able to get one, um, salt, uh, the snowplow, you know? Just look into it because we know that other people will help, but ain't no sense to have a snowplow if you don't have no salt. And, um, just please look into it. If you got that money like that, you should just balance it. Just balance it because it's going to be a rough one. It is, it's going to be a rough one. So we have to get ready for it and we should not be, you know, prolonging it. And knowing that cars and stuff is actually is going to get stuck. But we, we made it through last year. But we need to make it through this year. So it's, um, the other thing that, uh, our citizen advisor meeting, and we did not get sworn in because you didn't do it like y'all said, y'all didn't do it, you know? And, uh, we looking to be sworn in so we can have a mouthpiece for people. We need a mouthpiece for those who are here. And we need to get into our community and encourage them to come out to these meetings. And another thing that, um, um, the, the TV channel nine, you know, um, equipment, we can actually get on TV so they can see what's going on here. Because a lot of people can't make it out. You got a lot of elderly, they can't make it out. And we got children, you know, mothers can't make it out because of schools and other things. So we need to get this coverage back. And you know what? It was our tax money was paying for that. It's the tax money paying for that. So we, we need to speak for the people that's really not here. So that's all I got to say.
Thanks, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Jack, we got Jerome, Nancy, and Senator Martin. Um, Councilman Wheeler, I want to thank you for agreeing to come out to read, um, to our children. Um, I'm here again about the potholes. The last time I was here was, uh, was two weeks ago I was here. And I asked you, I said, I'm taking my work with you, drive up to eighteen sixty-five, uh, Garfield. See the potholes? How many of you have actually went up there? Not looking on TV, but actually have went up there through those potholes? Okay, and I, and, and when I walked in, I didn't hear the whole conversation, but I heard something about potholes is not that, you know, important right now. But go up there and just appear at elementary school and tell those teachers that, tell those parents and those children who have to, when Gerald Stubbles put it on the four-four-one-one-two, uh, news. Those holes, I, my daughter just, uh, bought a tire because my tire got messed up, one of my tires. We had two hundred daycare van driver, driving, uh, uh, cars, tires got messed up and the rims messed up. I know about times you came to your meeting and you said that you found some money, but I was told also after that, this money found, that there was already things that was already set aside for that money and the potholes was not in, in, in that. And that, that would take up to spring. But now when is getting ready to come?
Mm-hmm.
And the snow, and those holes, that's gonna, that's gonna be terrible. And one of ladies across the street, she already twisted her ankle just walking across the street. So, you know, if you had children there in that school, wouldn't it make a difference to you zing it? You know, so I appreciate if you, if you do something. Because we have too many young babies up there, that's from, from, from pre-aid to sixth grade. And a lot of our kids have to walk and we have to walk them across the street. Like I said, everybody's getting their cars messed up. Our principal, our music teacher, you know, they're, people complaining about getting their tires messed up. It's just not me saying it. So, um, this to me is, is, is something very, very important because I work there, every year I have to go there. And I know we got potholes everywhere, we talking about, we talking about babies, we talking about children, and we talking about lives. So please be conscious enough and have a heart. You know, if you can't do the full thing, at least patch it up, do something before it gets, before it gets bad, before it gets worse. That's all I ask. That's all I ask. It's not like a big, big, big issue to do. Just do the right thing. Take care, we say we love our city, we love our, we're out, looking for, out for the welfare of our children and our families. We're gonna prove it, prove it to them. Thank you.
Thank you. We can fund more person.
Jerome, two more.
Northfield Avenue, four-four-one-one-two news.
Yeah, second line, sir. We have second line, sir.
Oh, second line?
Yes, sir.
Where's line start?
Right here.
Right behind the brother. Alright.
I'm still, you know, I, I'm still looking at this, just to talk about a couple things. You know, the, uh, the launch for the, uh, to the traffic camp people, all that money while we were downtown, uh, litigating a case that shouldn't have been litigated against our clerk is just ridiculous. But I'm not going to talk about that. I'm just going to talk about this, 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 uh, property stuff here. And I go to all these meetings, but I don't understand why we're, where we're, I'll be talking, I'm gonna find Maxine and feeling cheek. I'm gonna find him and find out whether being punished to pay three hundred fifty dollars. When we flip it over on the other side, resolution fifty-fourteen, he's getting three hundred times three. And then we go to resolution forty-nine fourteen, he's getting a hundred fifty dollars for that, that house. And then of course, we go back to Ms. Wood's situation. She's getting a property and a house for a hundred fifty dollars. There's, there's, there's a, there's a big, I'm glad we're doing a first reading because these people here, I'm really concerned about the people. I'm, I think you guys could probably adapt that and change that a little bit for those people. At least give them the same bargain because if we're selling a bargain, you gotta give them, if you walk to the, to the, to the register, you say, the other people got that bargain, I want the bargain. I don't understand why they're getting punished for that going to all these meetings. Or maybe I'm just wrong. As far as the salt, we know we don't have salt. You gotta know that, we put it up there. There's no salt. We haven't bought salt, it's been a long time since we bought salt here in the summer. But the fire truck, uh, the, uh, salt trucks with those, those potholes I saw today, where I was pulling it up, I said, I told some of the teachers, we're gonna take those rocks that we're pulling off of that, the asphalt, put them on eBay and sell them. Because it's getting to be a big thing now. Lot of media people are concerned, everybody's watching. That's all I'm gonna say. I mean, the, the whole town's watching, the whole town's watching us on that issue. I hope y'all can come up with something, put something down.
Mm, thank you. Yes, sir. Are you East Cleveland resident?
Yes, ma'am. I'm East Cleveland resident.
State your name and address.
My name is C. Rome Smith, Majest, eighteen thirty-two Page Avenue. Okay? First of all, I just wanted to, uh, thank you all for having this meeting open where all of us did get a chance to say what we feel and what we think about different situations. And, uh, I was just like, maybe start off with something that's kinda funny and if you think about it, is that ever since I was a kid, I was always taught that it was illegal to be hoeing in the street. I mean, I don't know if any of y'all know any hoes? Somebody knows some hoes, but anyway, but, uh...
Well, sir...
No, the point is that, you know, there's a lot of hoes in the streets in East Cleveland.
Sir.
And what I'm saying is this, wait, I'm just saying, one moment. Give me a moment, give me a moment. Hoes in the streets. There's a lot of hoes in the streets in East Cleveland. And I thought hoeing was illegal. And the only bad thing about these hoes, they all wear one pimp and the pimp name is Chuck. Now, y'all know who Chuck Hoes is, but that's okay, but I'm not here to talk about Chuck or his hoes. But y'all need to get all these hoes off the street. How many of y'all agree? Don't take the hoes away. Come on, somebody hit him up and he just latched up in here, y'all dead up in here like, you know, cut the cake. You know what I'm saying? Put it off. Uh, but this is what I really wanted to say in our honesty. In our honesty is that God gave me a permission in a spiritual state of mind to say this, that Rockefeller, Rockefeller got a lot of money. Rockefeller Foundation got more money than we got hoes in the street. And my vision is that if city council members, each one of you, was to write a letter to the Rockefeller Foundation requesting some funds, money, cash, dividends, paper, however you choose to call it, help, we need it. And they would give it if we have the right reason why we need it. The infrastructure in this city, as my sister say, the hoes on that street in front of the school, when I seen that on the news, I said, they need me to come in here and let them know, listen. How many of, yeah, I believe that we was going a serious letter writing campaign. Every member of city council, including the mayor, which I already spoke to the mayor about this, and he agreed that he's gonna write one himself, a passionate letter. And there is a Rockefeller Foundation. I went to the East Cleveland City Library before coming here today, did a little research with some of the property that Rockefeller owned in this city. Rockefeller owned Forest Hill Park and a whole bunch of stuff. And his family is still very rich. And they care about the legacy that he left in this city. And I do believe that each one of you, including the citizens...
Yeah.
Y'all get on the website, social site, whatever y'all get on, Facebook, his book, your book, they book, my book, your book, all the books there is, get on, get on. Twitter, hitter, kitter. Don't be kidding though, get serious. Alright, y'all get serious and ask him his money. You know, because they got it. And they give it up. This, we talking about the Rockefellers. We ain't talking about the Bushes. You know, they got damn near as much as Rockefeller's, but not as much. But the Rockefellers don't mind giving. And I believe that they say, there's a website, as I went to East Cleveland Library, and the brother Travis gave me a website, there's a Rockefeller Foundation, especially for this purpose.
I hate to interrupt you, but your time is up.
How much time do you have?
Three minutes.
See, that's all?
But all the problems in this city, three minutes? Y'all need three hours for each one? Seems a process. Y'all be mess. Respect you, man.
Um, so, uh, the mayor has, the mayor has not, um, come yet. And I'm going to have to leave, um...
Is that so? That's a hard way of putting it. You can't...
But I would like to speak at this point, I would like to take my turn to speak. Because I wanted to address, uh, Jackie, what is your last name?
Good Drum.
Good Drum.
I play good drum.
Drum.
Alright. Good Drum.
When I spoke and said that we had found a solution to the problem of the potholes, I don't speak nothing that I don't know and I try not to, um, misrepresent the truth. And sometimes it might sound like I'm misrepresenting the truth. But I don't come out in public and say something that I have not looked at, figured out, talked to the people to me. I had a meeting with Mister, uh, Leach right after the potholes. Matter of fact, I haven't looked at the potholes. Mr. Will has once looked at them. Most of the council, I'm assuming, has went through the, the potholes. We all agree that these potholes are enormous. I don't think anybody is saying that they're not important. I think that when I talked up here, I don't know what it is that you misunderstand or somebody misunderstand what I said. I said they're both equal. I said because they have to be dealt with. But at the period of time right now, it is going into the winter and we need to have the salt, we need to have the salt truck. We just can't wait. But in getting back to what I was about to say, I had a meeting with Melron Leach, who is the Director of, uh, the Community Development. At that point, uh, I had, we had, uh, myself and my clerk had looked under the HUD rec. And at that point, we found where we could temporarily fix that street. But if you temporarily fix that street under the guideline of HUD, to this year, we would be bound to fix that whole street next year. And that's what he is in the process of doing. Now, I don't know who you talked to or who you didn't talk to, but I would suggest Mister Melron Leach, who is over the, um, Community Development. I also went up to, I was so excited. Pardon me, if you're gonna hold conversation, boys, no conversation, you can go outside and do that. Uh, I also was so excited about that we had found this under HUD. We call, uh, HUD's, uh, person who authorizes the use of these funds. And he told, uh, us to talk to Melron Leach. And also, when we talked to Melron Leach, have him call. That's what we did. Mister Leach told me, he said, we can do this, Council Thomas, and I'm going to put it under another code. So this code makes it so that when we do this, we can do the street, the whole street. Not just temporarily patch it. But we're doing this temporarily because we cannot do the whole street at this point. So ain't no way on God's green earth you can misunderstand what I just said.
Well, as I said, when I walked in, I, I didn't hear the whole conversation. I just, I just, just walked in, so I missed the first part. I just heard that part, that's why I...
I just heard that part, that's why I said, oh, on that right here.
No, no problem. I don't have a problem with anybody, uh, uh, speaking to me or quoting me, but quoting me properly. And you, I'm not talking about you. I'm, I'm not going to misrepresent the truth to my constituents, and that's what I said in my meeting the other day. My constituents, uh, I was talking to Ward too, and my meeting is always over to the public. So there was other individuals from all over the city that came in, and the media was there. And I can tell all of you, I care less about the media being there because I was speaking to my residents. And when I speak to my residents, I want them to know the truth. Because all of my residents do not come to these meetings. They do not come to the commission meeting. So the only way that they could hear my voice, because we're not on TV, and that's another story, is to come to a meeting and hear what I have to say. I couldn't care less if the media is there because the media knows everything in the first place. You don't hear anything that I said that, that they have quoted, they thought was important enough to quote. Because all of that is public information. Now, when we're talking about, um, these appraisals and these, um, uh, properties, we have land bank. And the land bank gives anybody at every bank the opportunity to go check out the land bank and the land that's in there and deal with what they want to get out of. They have to follow the process, they have to follow the rules and regulations. And if it is a phrase, and they accept the phrase of, oh, well, that's what they have done. I have no problem, I'm not gonna go back and retell somebody, or you can get it cheaper, or you can do this. That's not my business. I am a legislative individual, and I legislate. And when it comes up here, I'm not gonna ask, well, why did you get this, why didn't you get that? I'm not gonna ask that. Because once they pass through and all of the things have been checked, all the ballot checked and ballot, I'm not gonna do all of that unless there is some irregularities attached to that, okay? And, um.
Does that mean the potholes won't be fixed after weeks of springtime?
No, it's, it's, it's in the process now. I didn't say.
Yeah, doesn't ask it.
No, I said the temp, what did I say? Let me quote again, you are in the educational process.
Yeah, I'm looking for a specific.
Okay, I don't give, all I can say is they're in the process, and I said, quote, they're temporarily going to be repaired. And next year, by us coming out from under the HUD and we committed this money, we have to fix the whole street. And who did I tell you to go see? Mr. Melron Leach. And he can give you the whole scenario of what is being, is taking place.
One last question, you call Ms. Crowley in, in next week?
I will do what I have to. Okay, I don't do all that.
Can I need your word just?
Okay, so, um, moving right along, we also had, um, finances dictate to us what we can do. And right now, we cannot pay not one bill.
Ouch.
I'm being very honest, and, uh, my, um, assistant director is sitting over there. And if I am saying anything that is not true, please stand up and say, that is not correct. But at this particular time, without the appropriations being in place, ladies and gentlemen, we cannot spend not one dime other than to do payroll and things like that. We have insurance that we went to self-insure. We have not had the money to pay that. Now, I said that before, and I'm not misrepresenting the truth, that is the truth. There is no money until we get all of these things situated. You can't buy a truck. The commission has to approve all of the monies. And why do we have the commission here? Because, ladies and gentlemen, we could not manage our own monies. That is the truth. We got all these, uh, um, cars for our policemen. And if we do not, and Mr. Court, Delia is sitting back there, if we do not get these appropriations done this week, those cars will be snatched up and taken back. So I am saying to you guys, when we're talking about potholes, when we're talking about this, when we're talking about that, we're talking about money. And I always give the, the scenario, robbing Peter to pay Paul, we ain't robbing nobody because we ain't got nothing to rob nobody with. So, um, I'm gonna leave the rest up to my colleagues, and I'm asking to be excused because I go, I have someone in the hospital, and I want to.
Can I have a question?
No, sir, you have spoke, you cannot speak, you cannot speak anymore.
No question.
And if I misunderstand the hoes and the hole, excuse me.
I'm just trying to say about the hoes going up Superior Hill, there's some terrible hoes standing in the middle of the street.
I'm gonna turn this meeting over to my vice president, thank you.
All right, uh, next.
He ain't putting chuckle in there.
Houseman Kane.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like. Thank you, Vice President. I have a couple of comments. First, we'll start with the potholes, because that seems to be a major concern. It is of vital importance to us. If we don't have kids at the school, most of us have kids. Most of us drive, we feel the punishment of the potholes on our cars. And I've been up past Superior School. And my car takes a beating when I'm riding up and down the street. So, so it is of importance to us. I'd like to reiterate, mind you, in regard to the salt trucks, they were applied for, the money is coming from HUD, right? This money was applied for when Director Klinkstale was here. So you, you can imagine how long ago since she's been here, it's been eight months or more since she's been here. It, she applied for these, let's say last year. HUD approved it, so it's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of HUD directed money. Now that they've approved it, we can't say, we change our mind, we just wanna get one truck and fill some potholes. We've gotta basically buy two trucks with this money now, because it's been approved through HUD. Is that, is that a correct statement? Thank you. My last point is, I would like to encourage those of you who have questions about properties, the price of properties, and the value of property in our fair city, attend the NAC meetings, right? As the procedure has it, properties must be appraised by a licensed real estate appraiser, which none of us are, on council, right? So it gets appraised, and the appraised value is what the property is going for. I've talked to countless citizens in East Cleveland who basically said they're trapped in their home because their home is not worth it, or they can't sell it for what they paid for. So if you know people like that, please understand the value of real estate, land and buildings in East Cleveland is not what it once was. We're not giving away the city, we're trying to rebuild the city. I would encourage you to take a look at the land bank list and invest in our city. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Houseman Martin.
My colleagues, members of the public, I rise to speak, I'll be quite brief. Uh, number one, we don't have any money. And I won't get into that, you know why.